... Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting for October fifteenth, two thousand eighteen. Would you please take the roll call, Amber?
Yes, Commissioner Hart.
Present.
Commissioner Dowling.
Present.
Commissioner Narwood.
Present.
Vice Chairman Wozden.
Here.
Chairman Williams.
Here.
And Commissioner Dowell and Commissioner Masters absent.
All right, very good. Next order of business is to approve our amendments from the last meeting. Do I have any additions, predictions, or modifications? Anybody?
I'll move to approve the minutes of the September tenth, twenty eighteen, special meeting.
Could I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Okay.
Second from Commissioner Narwood. Motion of Commissioner Dowling. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion, oh this, we gotta do...
So we have to do the votes?
We have to do a roll call, yes, I'm sorry.
Okay.
We're gonna get the use of this.
Commissioner Hart.
Aye.
Commissioner Dowling.
Aye.
Commissioner Narwood.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Wozden.
Aye.
And Chairman Williams.
Aye.
Okay, good. The next order of business, we don't have the old business, but we do have, does anybody want to talk to us and to call the public for any items not on the agenda tonight? I don't have any list slips, so we'll go on to old business, which we have none. And new business, first order of business is an extension of the PCU seventeen zero zero four Immaculate Conception Senior Living Facility, requesting an extension for approval of that conditional use permitted. I remind everybody that for tonight, we're talking strictly extension, where they have justification and there's reason for us to go ahead and extend it. If we have any design review questions or whatever, that'll come at a later meeting if it's to make some modifications. So with that, Scott, you wanna give us a breakdown on this?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair of Commission, good evening. PCU seventeen zero zero four was conditional use permit, and that was granted October, or August twenty first, twenty seventeen, for a approximately one hundred and fifty thousand square foot senior living facility at seven hundred North Billbury Road at the Immaculate Conception Church, that area over there. One of the conditions was, for the conditional use permit, was for them to apply for building permits within twelve months of your approval. That time has elapsed this past August, and the permits were not applied for, for various reasons, and so the applicant is now here requesting an extension of that timeframe in order to move forward with the project, get building permits. There has been design modifications. It's gonna be now three stories, not four, so it will be required to come back to design review at a future date. The applicant is aware of that. They are processing their submittal to get to us to come back to a future meeting. There are representatives of the project here that can go into more detail if needed or answer any other questions that you may have.
Okay. Anybody have a question to Scott?
No.
Okay, Scott, anybody? Okay, fine, Scott. Who's here representing the applicant? Mr. Mongini, would you please state your name for the record, please, sir?
Mike Mongini, I'm the representative of the Immaculate Conception Parish. The reason we're asking for the extension on this use permit for the Heartland project is because the cost of construction have kinda gotten out of hand in their design concept, and so we, basically, it's gonna be a fireproof structure, and that has completely changed because the cost became so prohibitive. They have a bonding approval for this project because of the senior care, and that was exceeding the, what they had authorized to do the project. They're also going through redesign now, and it'd just be shocking to you how construction costs are going through the roof. I mean, it just, anyway, they're looking at, I called, I was Plan A, Plan B, and they're looking at a Plan C to come before you to show this is what we can build within this budgetary constraints. Stu Mills, Pat Brown, he's representative, he's stuck up in Oregon, but Stu Mills from Miami, Florida is here representing Heartland, which is gonna be the operator of the facility, and they're the ones that have the bonding approval. So if there's any questions, these costs, I'll just tell you right now, they've really blossomed, and this structure is very, very large, and so those costs probably impacted this more than a typical house. So that's the whole reason why this project is kinda, I don't wanna say stalled, but why it's moving slow.
Okay, any questions, Mr. Mongini, or?
No.
Okay.
No.
Any questions?
No.
Okay, but it's, it's still a, at this point, a viable project, you're going forward with it?
Yes.
That's the plan?
Right.
So if we get an extension, there's twelve months extension, something you could work with?
Yes.
You think to get a permit?
Yes, that's the plan. That's definitely the plan. Yes, Stu Mills, he's here, I mean, they've been spending lots, and Chris Shawn from SEC's here, he's the civil engineer on the project. I mean, they're, they're ready to answer any questions, but the nutshell is, it's just the cost of construction has just made it prohibitive.
All right.
And so that's why they're re, coming to redesign, dropping to a three-story. I don't wanna use the word a stick-built, it sounds negative, but us on the West Coast, we're used to stick-built buildings, we have earthquakes in California, so that dominates the trades on, on the Western United States. On the Eastern Coast, most builders built these concrete structures. That's kinda what they build on the East Coast, but we don't have all those contractors here. And the ones that are, they're building in Flag, I've approached them to come down and they says, "You don't understand, we're the only game in town, so we get a premium on this now in the West Coast." And so they're out of Chicago, building in, in Flagstaff, just because there's no talent around this area that can do those type of structures.
Right, that's a pretty big project.
I do have...
Yes, you'll have to...
Could you elaborate, though? Is it, is it the labor, or is it the materials, or, you know, can you separate the two for us, or is...
All of the above.
Really?
All of the above.
And what percentage increases are you seeing?
Well, I, I know that, on the two oh two, the contractor there, he had a hundred workers just leave in the middle of the project, and they're building that freeway loop, and they just went up and left because Vegas had such demand for them. They just all sudden, once one started talking to the other, next thing you know, you had a hundred workers just got up and moved up there, and he's trying to fill in. Now, when you fill in, you're filling in with less skilled people to take the same position, so your productivity declines and your costs go up. So I, that's, I think, I know equipment, just my personal stuff dealing with, we have very responsible subcontractors, and, you know, you don't wanna cut their heads off. They can't perform their, their contracts because their labor just disappeared and went to, a couple of them, drywallers, just took off and went to Houston.
Hmm.
Carpenter, same thing with the framers. I mean, it's just amazing, when you look at that, and I'd say, anything underground has doubled in cost in the last four years, just double. Pipe, and I actually, the manufacturer over in Kingman, I may be diverting, but I'm saying, wait a minute, this is ridiculous, we're just gonna get it from them, and they said, well, that's where we're buying our pipe from. And I says, they doubled their price. Then you go buy, then you figure out who owns the company, say, you gotta buy the stock because it's gonna go up because of the pricing, but everything is just, I mean, just a tremendous , not, we're not talking three or four or five percent, we're talking fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty percent.
Okay.
So, and I think, I don't wanna talk for Stu, but I think those are the numbers that have skewed out of place, is about forty percent.
Okay. But even that, with the redesign, it still looks like a feasible project, and...
It is, but I know they're, they're looking at something different than the stick construction because they're using them, using the different product back east, different than the concrete. Again, the cost or pressures back there.
Okay, very good. Any other questions? Other than that, I don't, I think we're, would you like to come up, sir?
Sure.
Thank you.
If you have any additional comments that you'd like to make, or for us?
Stuart Mills from Heartland Communities. I really don't have, I think Mike answered most of it, it's, it's really a cost issue, both materials and labor, and the labor is the toughest part. Materials are, we're constantly researching different materials, and, and that's what slowed us down. We'll be back to you with a new design shortly. We actually have all the funding for the project, this is really frustrating, because it's usually the funding for the project that, that takes the most time. In this case, it's reversed, we have the funding from State of Arizona Commerce Authority, and that's ready to go, but we're having, we're really struggling with the design and the cost, so we still expect to be starting in the next few months and be back to the board with all of that as soon as it's ready.
What kind of timeframe do you have on the financing commitment? Is there a time?
We're, we're in good shape, we have another year to do that.
Okay.
That, that, in fact, I met with them this morning, and they said even if it had to go past that, they could, they could push it back, but this is a project that the governor's office is watching itself, so, because they really wanna move this forward and, and have us get it done.
Right, well, we'd like to see it done, too.
As well as the diocese and the church.
Right.
So we're sticking to it.
Good. Very, any questions? Okay, thank you, sir, we appreciate you coming, coming to see us tonight. Okay, do we have any public comment on this? If not, I'm gonna close the floor. Mr. Hart, with regard to extension request?
I have no objection. I think the twelve month sounds reasonable.
Same. I agree.
Okay, very good. Well, with that, Vice Chairman, I'm gonna entertain a motion for you, please.
I move that we approve PCU dash seventeen dash zero zero four dash E X T, time extension, with the following stipulations. One, that the project is brought back to the Planning and Zoning Commission for design and review approval at a future date. Two, that the project conforms to code review board comments dated April eleventh, two thousand seventeen, and August twenty first, two thousand eighteen. Three, all departments, all department comments are addressed and adhered to during future reviews of submitted plans for this development. Four, building permits shall be applied for by twelve months. From the date of the time of the extension approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission, or the conditional use permit shall be subject to revocation procedures. Five, approval of this request does not confer any vested rights to develop the property unless all conditions of approval are adhered to.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Ford, a second, Vice Chairman's motion, roll call, please.
Commissioner Hart.
Aye.
Commissioner Dowling.
Aye.
Commissioner Narwood.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Wozden.
Aye.
And Chairman Williams.
Aye. Very good. Motion carried unanimously. Gentlemen, good luck, we look forward to seeing you back, hopefully not too long from now.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Looks like we got the place to ourselves.
Yep.
All these cars out here.
Happy Bud.
Okay, our next order of business is a consideration of approval for amendment to section fourteen, C one zone like commercial under Z O eighteen zero one oh. We've sort of been through this before, it's gone to city council, they've had some recommendations and concerning the going forward. If you look on page two of the staff report, I was talking to Scott just before the meeting, and the way it's written there on item, or section, subsection two, it says delete outdoor Would, that would mean that if you were not, if we approved the rest of that, you would be only having outdoor music within the entertainment district and nowhere else in C one throughout the city. The way it stands now, if anybody in the C one district would like outdoor entertainment, they have to come before us for a conditional use permit. What we're trying to do, has been trying to do, is work to simplify the process, so the people, particularly in Old Town and now the so-called entertainment district, which goes out to Main Street, throughout the Walgreens and the Safeway Center, could do that without having a conditional use permit. If you're outside that district, you could still have outdoor, but you'd have to get our approval going forward to, under conditional use permit. So we wanna sort of, the number two would, would be outdoor entertainment approved with conditional use permit, approval by the commissioner, some wording like that, so...
Yeah, I think you could just leave it as outdoor entertainment for other C one areas, not within the entertainment district.
All right.
You say something like that in your motion to recommend to council if that's what you choose to do.
All right.
The only other thing that maybe, when, if, if you may, do recommend that approval, is strike the word boundaries under A, after cultural and entertainment district boundaries, it already says it ahead of that.
Oh, yes, I see that double word.
Just, yeah.
All right.
So, as you mentioned, this has been brought to you a couple times last year for review, there was some back and forth on, on exactly where the boundaries were going to be, a little bit of confusion, even when it went to city council. They had mentioned possibly doing all C one in the entire city, it was taken to a work session with them, and in November of last year, they approved an entertainment district, which runs from the north of, in, north end of Old Town to the intersection where Walgreens and Safeway is, extends on either side of Main Street through that entire section there, including areas of Old Town where there was concerns of being left out of that original boundary. So what staff's proposing now, and as directed from city council in July's work session, is to have it a permitted use in the entertainment district. And then, as Chairman Williams says, leave it as a conditional use anywhere else, so you're not taking it completely away from everybody who's not within the entertainment district. And that's a change that we can make before it goes to council.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Looking forward, any questions, Scott, on this?
I've got a question, in the staff analysis, it says live music is an occasional event, and yet I don't see that in the, in any of the categories, A, B, C, D, A through E, about it being occasional. So it sounds like if we approve this, then it won't be occasional. I mean, these, you know, anybody, anybody can have the entertainment, you know, every day. Is that the intent?
That's not the intent. I mean, I'm not a business owner, I can't speak for them, but if people have...
Because if I, if I was, if I was a business owner and saw this, I can have music every day.
If people have live music outside their business, they usually have to pay for it. I can't imagine any business owner paying every day for live music.
And they can do it, they can do it right now, anyway.
Okay, one at a time, here.
They, they can do that right now, anyway. Yeah, I think that the reference you're referring to, you're making it a specific reference, whereas in general, there are various businesses right now, and they occasionally do it mostly on weekends, so I don't, I don't think that, that that is actually an issue. And Scott said, you're paying for that, and it is an occasional thing, even here in Old Town, but technically, right now, Colt Grill, or, I don't know, anybody that has that permit right now, every night of the week, if they wanted to, or they could do music, but they choose to do it when they've got a, more of a crowd, so...
Well, I mean, it was just, it seemed like, in the, in the analysis, they were saying, well, the idea is that it's gonna be occasional, but there's nothing occasional about the verbic.
It's just gonna vary between businesses and, and time of year. I wouldn't wanna be out there at night, particularly unless they had some really fired up torches out there or something to do it. Commissioner Narwood, you had a, did you have a comment?
I have no problem.
Okay.
No comment.
Commissioner Dowling?
Thanks, good.
I, I agree with Vice Chairman that, you know, that, that's just, I, I don't have a real problem with, I, I think we set the time...
I was just, I was really just trying to get a clarification.
We were concerned about the time limits, I think during the day, were, were...
Yeah.
Our biggest, one of our biggest concerns, and those are addressed here within this motion or with this amendment. To me, that's good, and I certainly don't have a problem with other C one having it behind my house, but if they come in for us, and we could talk about it, right?
I'm glad this is all over.
Yes, finally. This thing has been dragging for...
It's been a long time.
Oh, yeah, we've been back and forth, and we, we didn't make a motion or something, and then you went to city council, and the legal staff said, no, you can't, council can't consider it till you comes back to us. We had to rehash it again, and back to city council, and now they're coming back again with...
I think this entertainment district is what helped.
Oh, yeah.
It's the right way to solve the problem, I guess, so...
Yeah, yeah, it was really, really good. I think that's, that solves a lot of problems for a lot of us. So with that, Vice Chairman, entertain a motion.
We approve Z O dash eighteen dash zero one zero amendment to section four eighteen, C one zone like commercial, with the following stipulations. One, outdoor entertainment within section four eighteen, C one like commercial zone as permitted use with the listed requirements. And two, that any outdoor entertainment outside of the arts and entertainment district be brought before staff or planning and zoning, what, what would you prefer?
For a conditional use permit.
For a conditional use permit, yes.
Okay, that sounds good. Amber, that makes sense?
Yes.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, okay, Commissioner Dowling, seconds that motion of the Vice Chairman, roll call, please, Amber.
Commissioner Hart.
Aye.
Commissioner Dowling.
Aye.
Commissioner Narwood.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Wozden.
Aye.
And Chairman Williams.
Aye. Gee, I think we're at a ready for our shortest meeting ever.
I'm waiting for, I'm actually gonna wait for talk for a good hire today, so we can all say aye.
Aye, there you go. Okay.
Trying to get home before the fourth.
Right, right. The only other item we've got on the agenda is a discussion item only, and staff's been working on these wayfinding signs, we've talked about it a little bit before, some of our ideas, and they're just in the process of finding stuff, but they're coming across some additional little problems, you know, with what can happen, and so Scott brings us up to date where we're, what's going on.
So I know this was discussed previously at past commission meetings, it's also been recently presented to council at a work session. Their direction was to move forward with a wayfinding sign plan that we could follow to allow wayfinding signs of properties in Old Town. Jim Paget or other planner put this together, he's not here tonight, to go over it with you. There's some things, this is a very, very rough draft on the proposed ordinance, there's some things in there that would be changed, such, such as, A, conditional use permit shall be required, there's not gonna be a conditional use permit required because it's not gonna be up to a property owner to place one of these. So we're still working on that, this was just put together to kinda give you an idea of what direction we're headed so far, to see if, from what you have been given, if you have any comments or suggestions on your end, before it does come back to you for a recommendation.
Okay.
Yeah.
Commissioner Narwood, your first.
Yeah, I, I do, maybe it, there can be some clarification, I'm looking at two sep, two separate sections here, right? One of them talks about amendments to the section, and it talks about private businesses, but then the second section, which is really nice with pictures and everything, seems to relate to, to things that really the town would, would do or have already done. But I don't, I don't see how, in this wayfinding master plan, it integrates some of the ideas and things that you're talking about in these first two pages. It seems as if, what's confusing to me is that it's not clear that if a single business wants to erect a sign, it doesn't seem to be, I can't make the connection between the wayfinding master plan and how a single business that comes, comes before, let's say, your, your department, and says, I wanna put a, a finding sign down on the corner, it doesn't stipulate whose property it would be on, what the regulations would be relative, is it would be town property. I don't know, I missed all of that, did I miss something?
No, those are still things that we're working out. Those are still ideas, the locations in particular. We don't, we don't wanna open the door to allowing them on private property to where, like, like I just mentioned, that conditional use permit part needs to be taken out, and we don't want to allow people to have the opportunity to put wayfinding signs on their property.
Right.
For anybody and everybody with no...
Okay.
So we're still working on where they would go, whose property, which would likely be right-of-way, city-owned property at intersections.
The other thing that wasn't clear was...
They'll be done on a case-by-case basis. If somebody requests one, we're gonna look at the overall area, the overall benefit, who else could potentially use it, the cost, who's gonna pay for what, those are all things that we're still looking into.
Yeah, and it's the cost, too, I think, it looks as if, from what I can see, that theoretically, the town could absorb a great percentage of this cost, and I don't know if the town should. I think the businesses somehow need to be a little bit more financially integrated to it.
Yeah.
If that's what they want, then they need to pony up some, some dough, re me here.
And that's what we're looking at, again, we're looking at how much they would pay, would they pay an annual fee to maintain their sign on the structure? You know, who's gonna pay for the install of the original sign base? That's all stuff that we're still researching.
Yeah, this just doesn't look like an easy project to me.
No.
Yeah.
No.
I mean, it's pretty...
It's, it's pretty in-depth, there's a lot of stuff to look at.
Yeah, okay, so you're just starting.
Yes.
Great, all right.
Mr. Dowling, any?
No, I think it covers all of it, I know there's, it's a, it's kinda like, it's a process.
It is.
It almost has, I guess, envision that the city will say, here's where we're going to have them, and then say, would you like to participate, that sign of a setup, so...
Right.
Yeah, I think a lot of that.
Yeah, yeah, we don't wanna get proliferated, we were, we've got a couple already on private property, I guess, and sort of went up over the years.
Yeah, there's, there's some older ones, there's the one that's on the corner of Cherry and Main, that's been there for a long time.
Yeah.
There, there's a few of them out there.
And we approved a directional development sign over by, by Maverick, right? On the hospital property that...
Right, yeah.
People love to...
Right.
So, I mean, those kinds of things, I guess, are always gonna happen, but they should be, if we're gonna, I mean, that's the same, that would fall under this, in my opinion, I mean, right? It's a directional sign.
Yes, yes and no. Yes and no. Well, the, so...
Well, that one's somewhat temporary, too.
Off-premise signs are not permitted, except for under special circumstances, so they're, they're permitted for subdivisions if they provide some sort of public amenity, whether it's walking trails, a golf course, a park, then they can apply for a special directional sign, which allows them to be off-premise, which is what Mesquite Hills has done. However, a private business having an off-premise sign is a little bit different than that. So we're looking at doing the wayfinding to point people in the right direction...
Right.
...to find these businesses.
Mr. Ford?
Couple of questions. Based, you know, continuing what you were talking about there, I'm noticing, it doesn't have a page number, under existing conditions, where at the corner of Main and Villa, we do have some private businesses that have signage, how is that handled?
How was that one handled?
Yes.
This one was done through our Public Works Department a few years back, there were some business owners that had come in, and they worked with Public Works because that is A dot right-of-way, it's not city-owned on the corner, or on, on eighty-nine A there. And that's something that we're looking at as well, on those details. You know, it, a sign like this has to meet A dot requirements for visibility, whereas a special directional sign in, in Old Town, if we were to put one down here, would look, probably shouldn't say this, but would look, for lack of a better term, better than this one.
Yeah, I mean, I, the concept, I think, is good, but the actual execution is a little...
And that one...
But I mean, I like, I mean, there, some of the businesses that are listed there are fairly significant businesses, but they are on the out-of-the-way street.
And I do know that they paid to be put on there, they did pay, they weren't just given...
Where are we on that?
It's on the...
This one? Oh, Main and Villa, okay.
The Main and Via, Villa?
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, that was done a couple of years ago through our Public Works Department, they did pay, each business did pay for their slot on the sign.
I'll, I'll just chime into that, because that did come before us initially, and it was really Cork and Catch that was requesting that, they newly located there.
It was them, and then also another property owner. It was them and then also another property over there.
Yeah, and I, you know, I'll, so, I'll wait till Commissioner Hart's done for my comments on that.
Well, I was, as I was, I mean, that was just sort of, you know, at least conceptually, that's a good idea. I think the execution was a little weak. I think some of the efforts that you put into these conceptual signs is quite good.
Yeah, and we have, our Parks and Recreation Department is working on trail signs right now, and we're trying to see which direction they're headed because they're going to do a style that's similar to what we maybe like to see down in Old Town on that. And theirs is basically going to be a directional sign for the park and trail areas. So, we're going to look and see what they have found and see if there's anything we can incorporate into this one.
Well, I like the use of the rock bases with a, with a cap and then the signs, and I thought that worked out pretty well. The only one that I thought was a little weak was the number four, the directional I think that if you tried something where you did a larger arrow that's shaded rather than solid, because the, the arrowheads that you're using are kind of weak.
Yeah.
And something that shows up more clearly, but if you do a shaded sign or a shaded arrow, it can actually have the arrow, the, the lettering overlap the arrowhead and that the arrowhead still is much more prominent or, you know, more readable.
Right.
But all in all, I, you know, for a first effort, I thought it was quite good.
Mr. Ford?
Yeah, I, my comments are, I'd like to see the standardization. I like, you know, I know these are mostly trail signs, but even the directional signs I, I like, and I think that really is what, if you've been in some communities that do this, that do it well, it's a standard theme that goes throughout. And I like the River Rock accent, the kind of patina metal. It's, it looks really good, and I think standardizing that will make the difference between adding to the community how it looks versus not, because I have an opinion about, I know this was an A dot, but initially, it did come to us at the, at Main Street and Villa, and I was against it then and I am now because there, every business wants more visibility. We've gone through this with A-frame signs. We've gone through this with, you know, we're, we have limitations on that. And I think what, what happened with that was basically, we are doing everything we can to get more business in, which I think is great. But I think the way this was put in, it's a distraction. And in our world today, I just was visiting my in-laws who are retired. They, their cars have GPS, their phone has GPS. If somebody wants to go to Cork and Catch, they're going there. They can find it easier today than at any other time. Somebody isn't driving down the road and saying, oh, Cork and Catch, I wonder what that is. Let me go down and I wonder if they have food. There is an intent already, and I think that's an example of what we don't want to do because it's, the blue signs are directional, it's just a line, there's no, you know, aesthetics to it whatsoever. It was basically satisfying some business entities, and I think that opens up, everybody wants that. So, do we now go out to, you know, these public sites and because everybody wants one, so now our streets are littered with all these signs, whether they're aesthetically pleasing or not? I just think we can overdo it. So, I vote for, or my opinion is some standardization and looks good, the, what you're looking at, but eliminating these outliers that I think are distractions in, in the community. A good job so far.
Yeah, I agree with what Judd said. You just, if you look at the one here that says auto body repair, K-900 Club, American Heritage, the question comes to my mind is, first of all, that got there somehow, but who's, who's responsible for the maintenance of a sign like this? I mean, that should be part of the signage, is that the responsibility for maintenance, because you can see bricks are falling off and, you know, you might have an old sign sitting there and the business isn't even there anymore and yet the sign is up. You see that up in Jerome a little bit, and so I think the responsibility for maintaining these property signs or whoever should, it should be in, in the ordinance or in.
Yeah, and that's something that we would look into.
Yeah.
Doing, and, and, you know, if that annual fee that we would look at would cover something like that, then incorporate that in there.
As an example, who would be responsible for this one? Do we know?
This one, I, I don't know. The sign's been there for so long, it could just be the property owner where the sign is placed.
Yeah, I mean, you know, you just wonders.
Yeah, I would strongly second the comments of the Vice Chairman, maybe particularly that one, you know, turn it to a small sign and all of a sudden we got six businesses on it. Yeah, we don't, I, that's something I don't want to see through the city, that's for sure. And I like the standardization idea and, and tightening this up a little bit. I know, I had to reserve it about, you know, the city involved, how much, you know, they're going to pay and whatever, but I had businesses come and go and whatever, and you have maybe the city controlling it more, you know, on their property or, you know, they sort of watch it, adds more work to you guys, but I think we keep the signs better, the maintenance requirements, they have to pay fees or whatever to recapture the cost and, and keep them up and make them look decent, and I'd sure be for that. I think that's really important for you guys, the consideration going forward. I know there's just all kinds of little questions keep popping up, and we just keep working on it, and I think, but, yeah, they need to be limited. We needed to have good-looking signs. We've got some examples of it already, where we could go forward with that. When you get into the 89A and 260, do we have any control over, somebody just goes to A dot and we still have, we would still basically have the basic control as long as we met, you know, they'd have to have, the size big enough to make.
Yeah.
A dot happy, but somebody just couldn't go to A dot and say, I want a wayfinding sign on your, one of your poles here.
I don't believe they could, no.
Okay, okay. That'd be my biggest concern is A dot has so much control over so much of this stuff.
Yeah, I don't believe they can. It's something we can definitely look into.
Okay, good. Any other questions of Scott or comments going forward? Okay, just tell Jim you guys keep up the good work and.
All right, we'll keep plugging away on it.
All righty, that's about all. Do you, we have some things coming up in November, it looks like, maybe, Scott, a couple of things and.
It's possible if everybody gets us what they need to get us in the next, by the end of this week, then it could be a pretty heavy in meeting, several items. I think we counted up to seven possibly.
Okay.
If we get everything we need. If not, there will be some.
Okay, so, mark our calendars for the third Monday.
Anything on that? Is that?
I haven't heard anything recently, no.
Yeah, just, last we heard, they had title insurance.
I think.
Problems, title problems.
Last I did hear, they were having it redesigned.
Oh, okay. Maybe they've cleared up some of the title problems.
I think so, yeah.
That or, that or some of the building cost, building cost brought them back to reality.
Yeah, right. Well, that's like you said, that is a good example of it, yeah.
It's all Adobe now.
Yeah, all righty, nothing else, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move adjourn.
Okay, second.
Third.
Second. Aye, 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 aye.
Aye.
Good, thanks, everybody.
Aye, aye, aye.
All right, get home to Monday Night Football.